Good evening, this is the Virtual Board Selectment Meeting, Thursday, April 9th. This time, all adjustments will be muted and the meeting will be closed to new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on Channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to town.harwich MA.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in order they are received. They may be sent at any time. Mr. Valentine, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Scott. To our call to order the Harwich Board Selectment Meeting for April 9th, 2020, and I'll ask for a roll call attendance to get us started. I'll start with you, Steve.
Here.
Don?
Here.
Michael?
I'm here.
Thank you. Let's move then to to old business and Joe, I'll give you to start your discussion on COVID-19 and related subjects. You'll make it, I guess.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. So this is our, unfortunately, our regular update regarding COVID-19. Then there'll be the second discussion about the local cases and all of that. For our regular update, I just want to advise the board, as I referenced on your meeting on April 7th, that Megan and I have been working with on trying to develop or actually developing operational plans in anticipation of the surge that Governor Baker and the public health experts expect to impact upon the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we are prepared to changes in operational processing for the government, for town government. We'll be doing that effective April 11 through the 20th during what we consider to be the peak week potentially for the coronavirus and cases in the Commonwealth. We will be rolling out Guidance Document Number 10 with specifics for everybody, as well as a robust communication blitz. We will, I'm relying upon my notes here at the EOC, we will be releasing a broadcast email to staff as we've done. It'll be uploaded to the website. We'll be leveraging social media and print media. That will all be tomorrow, April 10th, soon after 8:30 in the morning. And then Megan is working with Jamie at Channel 18 to get a reverse 911 call. Generally speaking, what the public will find is, and I'll have Megan speak in a moment as to the reasons why we're doing this, but what we're essentially doing is there's going to be, we expect there to be minimal impact to the general public and it's more an impact upon employees and buildings. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Megan so she can give you the public health sense as to why we think these changes for the next week and government operations are necessitated by the potential surge. Megan?
Thanks, Joe, and thanks, Larry. The Governor Baker, as well as many public health experts, are anticipating that Massachusetts will see a surge in the number of cases of COVID-19 during the time between April 11 through the 20th. And it's not just the number of cases that we're overly concerned with, it's the number of cases that will require hospitalization, the number of deaths that will result with these numbers. This puts a real increased impact on our emergency responders and our healthcare system. So I want to ask everyone to remain home as much as possible during this 10-day period. It's a critical time. We want to reduce the risk of exposure because during this time, there'll also be more people in the community that are positive because cases are surging. But also, the less people on the road, the less people out and about will lessen the burden on our EMS and potentially the healthcare system. This is a, it's a serious week that we're going to be coming up on. Just over the last 24 hours, the state had over more than 2,000 new cases, which is a big increase from yesterday. So every day for the next 10 days or so, we'll see those numbers going up to the point where they may actually double every day. So some, at some point, we may have 4,000 cases one day and eight the next. So that's what a surge means. It means we're going up quickly. And what's more alarming is that in 24 hours, we've had 70 new deaths. So Cape Cod will experience a different surge than Boston, than Middlesex County, Suffolk County, where we're not as densely populated. So even though we will experience a little less of a surge down here, we don't want to overburden or overtax any of the healthcare systems that may be required to be used down here. Cape Cod Hospital has set up a field hospital, well, me, I actually have set up a field hospital at the base out in Otis to provide additional surge bedding for overflow patients. They're looking at opening up another one down this part of the Cape to accomplish the same thing down here. So it's important to know that we may not see hundreds upon hundreds of new cases in town or in, on Cape Cod, but the surge is statewide and we need to do everything we can to help lessen the burden. And we thought lots long and hard about the decisions that we made and they're really based on public health and doing everything we can to, to help people get through this process.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions or comments directed towards Megan or Joe about what's going on with our COVID-19?
Megan, Mr. Chairman, I had my own doctor talk to me because he lives in Harwich. Again, they're talking about Red River Beach, but he's not talking about anything draconian, like closing it entirely, but he was wondering if we couldn't at least put a sign there. Interaction on the beach, the dogs are running, the people are running after them. He says, I mean, his observation, because he goes there fairly often, he stays in his car, but he's concerned that people are darting in and out of their close zones.
Sure, we have a leash law, so perhaps we'll have to get the animal control officer to do some, some more patrols down there to get people to have their dogs on leashes. The concern, petting another person's dog is like giving the dog's human a hug. The dog is kind of, it's not that the dog is carrying it within its body, it's on its fur. I understand the concern, so people should be aware that petting someone's dog is like putting yourself within six feet of the dog's human. So I want to make sure everybody realizes that, that that's that indirect contact, it's like touching the counter at the grocery store. So if you see other dogs, don't pet them. It's one of those personal responsibilities, but we will reach out to the animal control officer and see what we can do about getting some leash signs down at the beaches.
Thanks. That's what my point was, is that they do carry it on the fur and that's.
Yes, it's a good point.
Larry, Larry, quick question for Megan. Megan, is some of this awareness of the surge caused by a better process in testing people? Are we doing more testing and as a result, seeing a higher number of people with the COVID-19?
Yes, so an interesting fact is that the more people that are being tested right now, the more will are coming out positive. But right now, the more people that are positive are requiring hospitalization. So we've moved from having just people that are asymptomatic be positive to still having that group of asymptomatic people being tested, but more people are becoming ill with, with the disease and requiring hospitalization. But last week, last, this last week, Cape Cod Healthcare at their drive-through facility did over 1,600 tests. They're testing over 3,500 people in the state every day. So more and more companies are able to run the tests. So more and more tests are being done and they're trying to get the results out faster, but positive results usually come out in 24 to 48 hours and then the negative ones, they take a little long in that kind of incubation to make sure it's negative, so it takes like three or four days.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I just didn't, I mean, I, whether the surge is a result of, you know, our ability to test better or the surge is a result of many, many more people contracting the disease is sort of up in the air there, I guess.
It is. The epidemiologists that look at the surge and figure out when the surge is going to happen and when the peak times are going to happen, look at how the person with the infection, how many people they can infect. So right now, it's looked at one person can infect 2.3 people. So they look at that and this disease doubles and grows exponentially. So if five people have it today, 25 are going to have it tomorrow and so on and so on. So that's why they are able to sort of forecast a surge and then at some point, the cases will start to level off because the population has reached its capacity of the number of people that will have it.
Yeah. Thank you, Megan, that's very helpful.
You're welcome. And I will be giving more information on COVID too. I just wanted to, I think we wanted to talk about why we're doing surge planning, but I'm going to be answering some more questions too.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Joe, do you want to update us what this means in terms of protocols going forward?
So essentially, it's, it's, there's really not going to be a major difference for the general public. They'll see that the transfer station will have new traffic flows to ensure social distancing. There were some complaints and concerns about that over the weekend. So by and large, the, the things that people have been doing, they will still be able to do. What we're trying to do is affect having more staff out of the buildings so that we're reducing travel, we're reducing impact on the building and all of that. So again, full details will be released in the morning, but essentially, it's really just, as Megan has said, is in an effort to emphasize and ramp up social distancing, we're trying to keep as many people off the roads as we can, quite frankly. And, and that starts with as many personnel that we can do that without impacting operations.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Megan. There's no other discussion on this agenda and let's move into the next one. And I'll just.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's Joe. If, before you do that, Megan has a numbers update, as she often does statewide, so we can talk about what has happened in the Commonwealth today as we do on our regular updates.
Sure. Sure. Megan, we'll turn it back to you then, and Joe's insistence.
Okay, thank you. The state number went up to 18,941. That is an increase of over 2,000 new cases in one day. Barnstable County went up to 444. That is about 20, 22 new, on the Barnstable County Emergency Planning Call this afternoon, I was told that there was one new death in Barnstable County over the last 24 hours. Statewide, there were 70 deaths. That surge and what it means, right now, we're at a 9.4% of people who have this require hospitalization. So the greater the number of people who have it, if we remain, and all along, we've remained between eight and 10% of people that have it require hospitalization. So the more people we have that have it, the more people we are going to have that require I wanted to address a article in the Cape Cod, I was notified of today, about an employee at Allen Harbor Marine Services. Just to get ahead of rumors and get ahead of things that you may hear, why aren't we doing something about this? The gentleman that way was an employee of Allen Harbor Marine Service and I do not believe he lived in the town of Harwich and that's why I wasn't notified and that's why there weren't any actions taken as far as preparing Allen Harbor Marine for any sort of cleaning or interventions. So results are only given to the town in which the person lives. It's one of the many faults to the case reporting system that we do with our next discussion, but I had gotten a few emails and people were concerned that they had to hear this information from, through different sources and they didn't get an official notification that a person had passed away in Harwich from this, but this person was not from Harwich. So that is, that is why that is the way it happened. That's.
Thank you. Okay, it's for you. Thank you, Megan, and that actually provides a segue then into our next discussion item, which is a discussion of possible on pros and cons of the Health Director releasing Town of Harwich COVID-19 case numbers to the public. And this came up as a discussion last week and we were, I know that Ed and Michael both asked for some more, and Don too, asked for some more information of what direction we should be going. And Megan, I'll turn it over to you to lead this then, that update us.
All right. So we have had significant concerns regarding the releasing of town-specific COVID case numbers. During the beginning of this epidemic, I felt that notifying the residents of the fact that the virus is within our community was essential information because it alerted the public that we are all at risk and this isn't an illness that can only be acquired by people traveling to different countries or other areas of our country that was experiencing a high infection rate. Our first case was community acquired and not travel acquired, acquired. So that, that was an important piece of information to release to the public. I continued to release updates on the number of cases in Harwich until the Department of Public Health informed us that we shouldn't be doing that. Protect individuals' privacy. I agreed with that practice. I still do. I don't believe that having a high or a low number in town impacts the town or the individuals who live in it response to the emergency. Whether we have one case or 1,000 cases, nothing, nothing changes. We should all continue doing what we're doing with social distancing. Said, nonessential businesses should still remain closed, no, no school for the kids, that sort of thing, because there's a high risk of acquiring it in the community. That's really why we all need to live as if we are all infected. There's a possibility that there's people among us right now carrying it, not knowing it, and passing it along to others. It doesn't matter if there's a person living on your street or in a different part of town that's positive. No one should be interacting with other people within six feet of each other outside of their individual households. So knowing that a person in your neighborhood is positive should not impact your life any different than the person living across town. Since then, the Department of Public Health has changed their guidance to say that the decision to release these numbers is at the discretion of each town. So right now, I want to give you some pros and cons and some guidance on how numbers are released to begin with and have you discuss whether or not you want me to release numbers. Because even though I feel strongly that it doesn't matter, at the same time, it doesn't matter. So if you want me to release numbers, I'll release the numbers. Some good points to releasing numbers is maintaining transparency, public awareness, and possibly decreasing anxiety and panic. On the opposite side, it's hard to be transparent when the case numbers aren't always accurate when they're released by the state. So Cape Cod Healthcare is one provider we have on the Cape. We have other providers that don't use the Maven system, which is the, the virtual epidemiology network, that surveillance, disease surveillance network. Cape Cod Healthcare is right on board with uploading results and notifying towns immediately as soon as the results are ready. But other providers are smaller and don't have the staff to do that, so they, they don't always get results uploaded to Maven. I had a positive on Monday that still isn't in the Maven system. So providing an accurate number every day or even every few days isn't, isn't always going to be correct and I don't want to give out incorrect numbers. Another con of releasing information is if our numbers are lower than Brewster's numbers or our numbers are lower than Chatham's, are we going to be attracting people to come shopping in our neighborhoods because it is at a less of a risk to them? And then on the opposite side of that, if we have really high numbers, are we going to be seen as not doing something right or are we going to have increased panic and anxiety? Information, the healthcare portable HIPAA, the Healthcare Act, does allow us to, to release case numbers. We can't release any demographics as far as where they live, the person's name, date of birth, that sort of thing. We can't release that. One other piece of interesting information is that Cape Cod Healthcare has developed a mapping tool that they have requested each town to weigh on, weigh in on whether or not they want to be part of, that identifies case numbers by zip code. This would not be downtown by town, but by zip code, which I think does not protect as much private information as it should. And, and again, it's not always accurate because we know we have four different zip codes, but when the nurse or doctor is putting this information into the system, they just use R2645. So again, that's another part of the reporting that doesn't always make sense. Towns do have the option to opt out. One other thing that this mapping tool is going to do is show towns in different colors for low risk, high risk. Green is low risk, orange is high risk, and that's based on the number of new cases that each town would get over a 72-hour period. So if you get more than 10 new cases in a 72-hour period, you're considered a high risk. Again, I don't agree with putting a risk on this because the risk is the same everywhere because you don't know who's positive and who's not. It's just the nature of the disease. So if we do decide to release numbers, I want to caution the board and all of the residents or anyone relying on this information, that I don't always get the right numbers in the most timely manner. Sometimes I've been the last to know. I get information from social media before I know about it. So I don't want to be held completely responsible for releasing those numbers. I am happy to answer any questions about that.
Let me open it up. Anyone have questions? Don?
Yeah. I, I understand what Megan is saying and I was kind of really pushing to have this on the agenda because at this point, that ship has sailed. At least upwards of 12 towns on the Cape already released individual information and the Cape Cod Times is using them. Even Chatham does next to us, Chatham, Wellfleet, Truro, Barnstable, Mashpee, I mean, there's a lot of towns that are releasing the data now. What concern is, I'd rather hear whether it's accurate, it's totally accurate or not, you're not going to be responsible for that, Megan. It's that social media, and by that, I do not mean one particular site, I mean, social media in general, across all sorts of different platforms are putting things out there. I'd rather have them get some authoritative information from the town than I would have them like in a back channel speculating about stuff. And if you're good with numbers and there is 12, there are 12 towns involved that are telling, it's not hard to infer what our numbers are. I'd just rather have some sort of, without HIPAA problems, I'm not even sure I like the mapping, but I just would like the idea that we're being transparent, you know, of people who live here, this many people have contracted the disease, but coming from us, it means something. Coming from the internet, I really don't want people starting to rely on those websites. There's websites from Cape Cod Hospital personnel, that would be the high end. And the low end, it's more like people that are sitting in a bunker throwing numbers out. It, since, I mean, I read what you read, that the newer advice from DPH was that it was up to us. Ultimately, they did flip-flop.
Anyone else here to comment, question?
Larry?
Michael, is that you?
That was Ed. I'll go after Ed.
Okay, Ed, please.
I also asked that this be put on and also I had asked that if there were any, any document had been produced by the state as guidance that be provided, were, were any documents sent out to us for review?
I didn't have any documents that I was able to forward to the board. So I'm not aware of any other sources that would have been providing them.
Okay.
The Department of Public Health's website just has a, a statement on it about releasing numbers at the time of.
Okay, I, I have said, at this point, I no longer have access to my email account or, or is the update in the Dropbox working for me? So I'm sort of flying blind. I can download the agenda on the town's webpage, but that's all the information I'm getting in prep for these meetings. If there's any backup information, it's, I'm not able to access it at this point. I, I tend to agree with Don that I'd rather have for all its potential. To the speculation and whatever happens in, in social media, internationally, you can see there is all sorts of manipulations of the public going on with what the clauses are and what things need to be set ablaze to be eliminated. I'd rather we deal with just the information that's being publicly produced rather than leaving it to the rumor. rumor mill or people just making it up anyway.
Thank you, Ed. Michael, you wish to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I actually agree with Don and Ed both, but I was happy to hear that just because you read it on social media, it doesn't make it true. On the other hand, I do, I do have a lot of respect for our health director. And I think she's given us really good reasons why we shouldn't put it on there. I believe it does, does if our numbers are low, give people a false sense of security. So I'm going to err with the health director and I don't think that we should post it or talk about it unless she says we should. We're meeting two to three times a week. She's giving us reports on Barnstable County, and I think that we need to take seriously what she's saying, and I wouldn't support releasing it unless she does.
Steve, you wish to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of a little, and ambivalence is probably the wrong word, but on going one way or the other, I I tend to agree with both sides of this. I think Megan has done an excellent job when there has been issues or questions brought up on answering those in an effective fashion so that we know what, you know, the truth is and what, you know, is just sort of that social media hype that happens out there. Transparency, though, is probably the best policy here, I guess. You know, going back to what Don and Ed have said, and Megan seemed to indicate, and Megan, please correct me if I'm wrong, that you know, you're sort of willing to go one way or the other on this, depending on how we feel. I don't want to make Megan's and Joe's job any more difficult than it already is. But it may in the end prove to be the best part of judgment to just, you know, get the numbers out there and you know, obviously, there's no more information beyond the numbers. As Don said, there are many, many towns on the Cape doing this. That may be the best route to take, but you know, I'm not, you know, of a strong opinion either way, but.
Let me weigh in. I'm also not of a strong opinion either way. I've said this last time. I will say, however, that when I look at this, our primary objective is to influence behavior and for people to use the social distancing and the items that we're asking them to do. And my fear of releasing the data is that it becomes a numbers game rather than making our number one point is to behave as though we're, we have a disease and why should they behave here? And so I guess I look at it more simply, if it's not helping enforce and educate people on behavior, then I'd be against releasing the numbers. And this, since we're putting them out once a week and sometimes twice a week.
Larry, could I just offer some information for the board? It's Joe.
Mr. Ray.
I understand. So Michael had mentioned about the meetings. I just want the board to know that for next week, we did not have any agenda material. So we do not have a meeting posted for Monday, the thirteenth. The next board meeting will be April sixteenth. So next week, the board will only have one meeting. I just wanted that out there because we had been on a two to three day a week schedule, but not next week. Just for the board to be aware.
Okay. I guess where we are now then is Megan's looking for direction. If someone wants to move a motion, we'll give Megan some help.
I'd like to move that we release the information by town through Megan without any other information associated with it.
Second.
Megan, let me ask, we have second. Are you, what's your ability to filter that data and give all or parts of it that you think are relevant? Is that entirely up to you?
I do have access to the Maven program, so I run a report at the end of every day. Again, some numbers come in after four o'clock. So I would be comfortable releasing on, say, a weekly or bi-weekly timeframe. Someone had said, whatever makes your and honestly, I've gotten so many emails from people wanting it that it would, it would make my job easier just to do it. Although I don't completely agree with it, but I am kind of appalled by some of the emails I've received.
My motion down, Larry, to once a week, that's right. If that's
That's gonna be my comment. I'm more comfortable with weekly, so it's not, that gives you a chance to verify some of the numbers and do the more credible job.
Is that okay with that? That's a second?
Questions?
Yes, it is.
Ed?
Okay, it's fun. And if I could just make a comment, you know, I guess the suggestion that we would only numbers if they, if we felt that they would support our influencing people's behavior in one way or another. I think if that's the reason we might decide not to, I think it only provides fodder for the crazy sort of conspiracy theories that are out there. You know, that we would use, only use the numbers in order to manipulate the public's behavior. If that's, if that's our reasoning, we're setting ourselves up to be accused of any number of conspiracy theories.
Ed, would you be willing? If I change the motion to weekly?
That's fine. I said that's fine. Yes.
Great, sure.
Larry?
Ed, you're exaggerating my, you're exaggerating, excuse me, you're exaggerating my mind put on that. My input was is that we need to be careful of all our discussions that we encourage people to follow the best behavior to shorten this, this disease, not that we manipulate any numbers. Steve?
No, I was just, I was basically going to say pretty much what you said. I don't think there's any of us in this group that would ever want to do that. You know, I agree with that. It would be the wrong thing to do. But I don't know, I don't think there's anyone on the board or, or any town employee that would ever, you know, want to utilize the information to sort of sway people one way or the other. So, you know, that's my only comment.
We have a, we have a motion in a second. Yes, Michael?
Yeah, I just, just back to Megan. Megan, if I'm hearing you correctly, and I just want it on the record, you'd rather not release the information, but you'll do what the board vote is.
That is correct. Yes, Michael.
Thank you.
Larry? It's Don.
Yes, Don.
Since Michael brought that up, I'll bring up the other side of it. Has the Board of Health itself, which is the policy board, weighed in on this?
No, I have not heard from the Board of Health since our last meeting in March.
Larry, if I may?
Yes, Michael.
Thank you, Don, for pointing that out. But my faith is with the, with the department head and our health director, just for the record.
I think at this point, we need to move ahead and when the Board of Health has a chance to get together, then we can modify it if so desired. We have a motion in a second. I'll take a roll call vote. Michael?
No.
Ed?
I, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Okay. And I'm going to vote I was the weekly report. So Megan, hopefully that will help this, you know, where the board is on it. Thanks again for all your work putting this together. Moving to the moving to the next item, and Joe's going to recuse himself on this item, but it's town administrator search committee update, and Chief Norm Clark is going to bring us an update of where the search committee is for the town administrator. Norm, floor is yours or screen's yours, however you want to look at it.
Good evening, Larry. You want to make sure you can hear me okay?
I can hear you.
I just want to back up quick, just real quick on this. I've had the privilege to see Megan and Joe in action. They are working out of the public safety facility. And I want to assure you, the board and all the folks in town, that we are in really good hands. It's very stressful, to say the least, on them and us, but they're doing a great job. And I'm proud to say I'm able to work with them. Moving on to my other hat, we did meet last night in public session remotely. And I just want to remind every one of the members of the board that the members of our committee are Julie Kavanaugh, Dan Wolfe, Linda Sebula, Mike Curley, and myself. Linda is the clerk, and I am the chair of the meeting. The agenda was fairly brief. I reported to the committee that I felt very strongly being the fire chief in town and listening to the message from Carol Coppola and the board about expenditures. And we have what I would consider a that was allocated to hire a consulting firm to do a search and help us get ready to present recommendations to the board on the next town administrator. And we are under a state of emergency globally, in this country, and in the town. This is no time to be spending any amount of money for a consultant to look into the next administrator, in my opinion. And to make a, we had good discussion, but animus to not spend any amount of money, taxpayers' money, to look into a consulting firm to help provide information and to request the process to get resumes to us and then whittle those down and give the board a selectmen. We felt very strongly on that. I was happy that they understood and backed me in my position. So having said that, we also felt unanimously that that we need to expedite the process. Whether it be the interim going to a full position or bringing in another candidate, it needs to be done. The process needs to go quickly. We need to follow the charter. We are clearly aware of what that is. And I would encourage to support the committee in moving quickly because we need defined leadership. And I mean, no disrespect to Joe Powers. He's doing a tremendous job under extraordinary conditions. But I, I believe, as does the committee, that the board should move quickly, properly, and to get a permanent administrator onboard to lead us through this emergency that is not going away tomorrow, next week, or next month. So that essentially is my report to you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll entertain questions.
Norm, let me ask you to go step farther and describe for me what moving forward means. I would gather that the charter calls for advertising in the papers, for instance. What does that mean?
I believe that the position needs to be advertised in a proper fashion. I don't have the details in front of me, but I'm sure the charter would call for local advertisements as well as advertisements that would at least go statewide. And if you had a paper like the Herald or the Globe, they're seen all over the country on the internet and certainly maybe through, you know, MMA, Mass Municipal Association, something like that would cover it. We want to make sure it's done properly, but the emphasis would be to do it quickly. And to provide it, and then from that, we would provide the board with a recommendation, unless you're going to advise us differently.
Time for questions or comments directed towards, to Norm? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Norm, refresh everyone's memory. I know when the vacancy occurred, but when was the committee created?
Well, I know we've had to cancel two meetings. And I don't have that information in front of me. I don't, I'm going to say it's been two months since we were appointed.
Then has any action been taken at all in furtherance, getting a town administrator then since that happened?
No. When the COVID emergency was declared, that consumed my attention. And I, I suspended any further meetings. We had one scheduled, but my intention is, is is right now solely to keeping my firefighters safe and the citizens of the town. But I felt as, as, as part of that, Don, that the impact of an interim position as administrator is not the best, in the best interest of the town. I believe we need to move forward in some shape or fashion that the Board of Selectmen need to decide on what we're going to do. And what we're asking is that we don't spend any money on a consultant because we're going to need all the money we have to just survive through this as a town. And that we need to define the leadership clearly going forward.
Yeah, I wasn't casting aspersions. I just wanted to give everybody an idea that we're talking about from November to now, and nothing has actually occurred in furtherance of going out to recruit.
No, we haven't done anything. Last night was our second meeting.
Larry, Steve Ford?
Steve?
I know we took a vote on hiring a consultant, so where are we on that? And how would we, if we chose to, reverse that?
Norm, I can speak. As far as I know, we have not yet signed the contract on that.
But we have not.
Okay.
I, I think, I have, I have had a one conversation with Mr. Lynch. It certainly wasn't my position to talk contracts or money. It was just an introduction. But again, I'm going to go back to the fact that, Mr. Chairman, we're under a state of emergency. So the fact that we haven't signed a contract, that there are many elements in society now that, you know, money, the way we spend our money is changing. And I just think that the responsible thing to do with this is not to spend any money on a consultant. I believe that the committee that the board selected is fully capable of taking this to the next and giving you a recommendation. But what I'm asking to do is do it quickly.
Other comments or questions for Norm?
Norm, or Larry, if I may?
Go ahead, Michael.
Norm, when can we expect, and don't take this the wrong way, when can we expect the minutes from yesterday's meeting? And I say that the Board of Selectmen is so far behind on their minutes, but I would certainly like to know, and I haven't watched the meeting, the conversation.
Linda Sebula, I had a call last night when I got home that someone had already seen it. Channel eighteen was very quick to get it up on YouTube. I'm not sure how you, how you get to see it, but I know someone had already seen it last night. So the information is there. Linda is extremely efficient with her, with the notes. We read and accepted the minute. They'll be available tomorrow if they're not already available. Because she was already looking for contact information for the next meeting.
Thank you, Norm. And I do know that there'll be, there'll be draft minutes if we can get them fairly soon because you won't have another meeting to vote them.
Okay, Michael, Ed, comment?
No, I'm fine.
Steve, Steve? I, so Norm, if I, if I'm correct on this, and just following the discussion, we can get the copy of the draft minutes, and we can add, we'll have tonight a discussion involved on moving ahead with advertising the position.
I, yes.
That allows to move ahead and get something going on, on the, our next meeting.
What, what we're looking for is, we voted last night not to spend any money on a consultant. So that would be something I would ask that the board confirm, or say, nope, we're gonna spend the money. That's first. And then I would work with Bob Lawton on developing an advertisement, a language of the advertisement, and a schedule of that advertisement that I certainly would have the board approve.
Okay.
Larry?
Yes, Steve?
Larry, Steve Ford, I, I think it's required that the selectmen, you know, are the ones that decide on issuing the advertisement. And I just heard Norm saying that he would run it by us to approve it. Do we also have to rescind our vote that we already took to hire this company? Because we did vote on it.
We would, but we could put that on the agenda at the same time that we do as the next meeting?
That, that would be good.
We had two agenda items.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Norm. You know, expediency is the most important thing here. But, you know, we gotta do it along the, the rules that guide, you know, what we do with selectmen here. So because we did take that vote, I think we have to rescind that vote.
What I would propose is, is to work with Bob Lawton and put two agenda items on for our next meeting. To cover the items that you discussed, rescinding the vote and moving ahead with advertising the position.
Larry, it's Don.
Don?
Totally agree with everything that's been said. All, all I would point out is, because it's the elephant in the room, I would suggest that we make sure that we don't sign and send out the contract in the interim, if we're gonna have a discussion about rescinding it.
I'll double check on that, but I'm sure we're not, but I'll follow up, Don. Good point.
Well, I'm just saying, if somebody picks it up and says, hey, I guess we should send this out. Yeah, I would suggest just hold on to what time being.
Confirm that, Don. We don't live in a perfect world, so I will double check that.
Well.
If there's no, someone else want to say something?
It was Ed. You know, we, we picked the, the company, but we, we in no way reviewed their, their contract or approved any of the provisions in the contract. As a matter of fact, there was some discussion of changing.
We didn't approve the contract per se. You're right.
Right, right. Even if there is a contract kicking around, it's, it's had no level of approval whatsoever.
Yeah.
And
That was just, you know, it's a, it's a double bandage, I guess.
And, and the other issue is, you know, I don't know where we're going in the future, but, you know, I, I do know that boards of selectmen in years past have hired all sorts of people without the, without the provision of a search firm doing the search for them. So it still, it doesn't lock us into doing anything specific.
Thank you, Ed. Norm, I think we're, we've handled your discussion tonight. We'll move forward with those two items for the next agenda. And
Larry?
Michael?
Yeah, just if I could add for topic when we just, when we decide to discuss this, and I, and I do agree with Stephen that we probably would want to, if we're going to rescind our vote. I would ask somebody to follow up with Carol, because it's my understanding that a reserve fund transfer is already underway on this. So somebody sooner than later should follow up.
Michael, if I may, I can, there was a request for reserve transfer. In fact, I talked to Dana today. The Finance Committee was talking about meeting next week. I've asked Dana to postpone that for, for a little while because of the extreme protocol we're going through and basically shutting down Town Hall and the trouble of scheduling now additional video calls. So there's been no action taken. That is, is the end of that. And it won't be for probably a couple of weeks at this point, until we get through the COVID-19 surge.
Okay, Larry, a little more on that would be, the Board of Selectmen has never taken up, and I know that this was talked about in length by Dan Wolfe when, when we appointed the search committee. Coming up with exactly what the Board of Selectmen as a whole wants in the town administrator, pay. I think it falls into description and advertisement, but we haven't had that conversation yet. We haven't had a conversation about pay. We haven't had a conversation about wants. With all due respect to the fire chief, and I do, I think, understand what he was saying as far as immediate leadership needed. I'm not, I'm not, as one board member, in any hurry on picking the next leader in the town of Harwich. And I have full faith that if we run based on how much Harwich has been talked about in the papers and at MMA, that we will get a fair amount of applications. But I think the Board of Selectmen to Dan Wolfe's comments need to decide pay scale and the rest of the, the rest of the stuff that need to go in a, in an application, that we agenda that.
Will do. We'll work through the agenda items then. All right. I think we're, we've had, we have some direction, Norm. Thank you very much for that. And we'll move ahead.
Get those minutes to the board probably tomorrow.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Norm. I asked Joel for, asked Joel to join us again, please?
I did, something to text.
Okay. Scott, while we're waiting for Joel, next on the agenda is public forum. Anyone e-mails wishing to weigh in?
I know, sir, at this time, I have nobody that has requested to speak. Would you like to? So just to be done as a assignment, do I also speak?
I would authorize it, but I'm not going to wait for someone to weigh in. I think we'll move then, then next to the town administrators report. And if someone does wish to weigh in, we can interrupt our, our discussion, Scott, if that's okay.
Understood.
Joe, you want to go to town administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's, I only have, excuse me, I only have one item this evening, and it is unfortunately COVID-related, but it has the potential for, for great, for positive news. Yarmouth Selectman Mark Forrest had informed Cape Cod-based administrators and managers that retired Brewster Police Chief, I believe I'm saying the last name right, Richard Koch, is involved with the Cape Cod and Islands Major Crisis Relief Fund. The ma, the Major Crisis Relief Fund is, is based here in Cape Cod. Most recently, Cape Cod Five just made a major donation to the fund, and that's because the fund is getting hundreds of calls seeking assistance. The Major Crisis Relief Fund can help Cape Cod residents with mortgage payments, car payments, medical bills, or other basic needs during the COVID-19 crisis. So just putting that out there to the general public, we will have their, their link added to the Town of Harwich COVID-19 resource page. And the good news is that if folks are so inclined and able to do so, folks can make donations to the Cape Cod and Islands Major Crisis Relief Fund, and those donations will remain in the community and help folks that have been hit hard by, by the crisis, either because of job actions or health. The, the link is majorcrisisereliefefund.org. And again, we will be adding that to the Harwich COVID-19 resource page, as well as on the website, so that people are aware of it. And hopefully those that can give will give, and those that need the help can use that to get the help. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other updates.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joel before we move to the selectmen's reports? Yes, now I'll move to select report. Ed, I'll start with you.
I don't have anything to report.
Michael?
Thank you, Larry. If we could agenda, talking about the tax bills and when they're due. I know a lot of other towns have made this, the Board of Selectmen's made decisions to waive that tax bill. That's one. And then number two, I just want to thank you, Larry, for getting some of the answers to some of the questions that I had. I know we still have some things to tackle, but if we could get those as part of the next packet, so the public can see the answers to those questions as well, I would appreciate it.
Okay, and Joe, we can work on the tax information for the next agenda?
Actually, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the quick update is staff's already working on that. Spoke with the Water Commissioner, excuse me, Water Superintendent and Finance Director today separately. Water Commission is looking to discuss the matter relative to water bills, and the Finance Director is working on process and procedures for the board to review in line with that. So we are trying to affect that full for the next day, April 16th. At this time, however, I do want a board meeting, which is next Thursday. To alert the board that unlike this evening where we're able to live broadcast, we may not be able to give in measures related to what we're doing for surge potential. So we can certainly, we're striving to add that on the 16th, and may, may include the Water Commissioners and the Board of Assessors, and I'll report out as soon as we have more information on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, yeah, please.
Just one last thing. It was in response to Don's doctor's comments. The, and just so the public knows, maybe Don could get the other social media site to post it. The Harwich Animal Control has their own Facebook page, and there was a lengthy discussion on what you shouldn't, should not be doing with your dogs. So the Harwich Animal Control Officer is very aware of what Don described. But maybe we could get that link on the town website, or we can get it shared on other ones, but the, the Animal Control Officer did post what Don was talking about. So she's very aware of it.
Thank you for that. Steve?
Just quick, just wanted to make sure we thank the selection committee, the folks that we all chose as could help us and guide us with who, who we should pick as our next town administrator. I, I think even without a firm that would guide us, I think those individuals have the background and knowledge of the town to really guide us in a way that we can find the best candidate for the position. So I just wanted to thank them for the work that they've done and the guidance they've given today.
Thank you, Steve, because we knew when we put in a very strong committee, very powerful committee.
Larry? Yes. Mike mentioned that on the Animal Control Officer's website, he said a departmental website or page or a personal page?
Just a quick answer, Ed. It's a social media page. It's a Facebook page that the Harwich Police Department has.
Okay, thank you.
Don, anything, selectmen's reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just the same global that I've been on, since we're not meeting until Thursday, I'm just gonna urge everybody given the fact that the surge is upon us, to just stay safe and be well.
Thank you, Don. I, I agree with that entirely. It's just, it's just that everyone in town, I think we're doing a good job of following procedures and it's helping us. Let's just keep it going. Scott, I gather no one's contacted you. I'll take that as a no.
Sorry, I was muted. That's correct. No, no further contact.
You were muted. That's great. That makes you feel better. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Almost done.
Second, Steve.
Is it a second? Do it by roll call. Steve, I'll start with you then. Yeah, I got to the second, Steve, and you can, I'll take a roll call, vote and adjourn. Steve?
Aye, aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Michael? Ed?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So have a nice, I guess, Passovers today and a good, a good Easter this weekend, and we'll talk next week. Good night now.
This conference is no longer being recorded.